Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Carrier.
Here.
Mr. Levy.
Here.
Mr. Methvin.
Here.
Mr. Vedder.
Here.
And Mrs. Mazur.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a couple of visitors tonight. Davia, of course, getting ready to be on the board, I believe. And Emily's here for college class. And then Aaliyah for a presentation. So, welcome to all of you. We're short one administrator today, I see. So, with that welcome, Aaliyah, you are on. So, you just kind of explain to us what's going on as far as your senior project? And Mrs. Coffin will give you a microphone.
Thank you. So, if you don't know me, my name is Aaliyah Keeley and I'm a senior here at Hicksville. And I'd just like to present my senior project today, which I will be doing hometown hero banners for veterans. I'll just pass out these flyers. Just like pack them down if you want. So, I just wanted to present today to get a little more word out. I decided to do these banners because a lot of other towns have them around, like hanging around the lampposts and things. And I thought that Hicksville, that would be a really good, a good thing for Hicksville to have, just to honor the veterans and everything. So, signups are now going to be open to secure a banner. So, any veteran that would want one, or a family member of a veteran could get one. All you need is the name of the veteran, branch, and a photo to secure a banner. And donations are not necessary, but they're welcome. So, I will be planning to fundraise, fundraise this project through like groups around the town and also possibly a fundraiser maybe at the school sometime.
What kind of funds are you looking for, Aaliyah? Do you have an idea about?
It's about five thousand, because it's about fifty dollars per banner, per side of the banner. That's just an estimate.
In this room for a hundred?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome.
Possibly more, but the village said that they'd be willing to sponsor the brackets on utility poles. So, they said they would be willing to sponsor all of that.
Oh, nice. Are the first come, first served then, to get your name up on a banner or to fill it out?
Yeah, all you need to do is pick up the order form and hopefully I'd be able to raise enough funds for everybody. If I don't, I mean, I'll look for other ways too. So, just anybody that wants one, hopefully you can get one.
So, do you know, so currently there's like business banners up. Are they going to replace that or are they going to be in addition?
I'm not sure about now, but they're looking to put them up around Memorial Day. So, it's possibly a thing where they could switch it out, like for Memorial Day and then the next Veterans Day as well. So, it could be a continuation type project.
Any other questions for Aaliyah? All right, thank you very much, Aaliyah. I appreciate it.
The project.
She does have signup sheets, I think, so if anybody in here would want one, you could grab one now. All right. Any takers at the moment? All right, thank you, Aaliyah. You can actually leave the meeting now if you'd like, unless you want to stay for some extra time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are moving on to principal reports. Who's the lucky winner? All right, thank you, Mr. Highlander.
For the high school, as you know, I mentioned this last month, all of our students participated in an event at Defiance last week in which the Ohio Supreme Court did a session on the road. They pick one county a year, at least one, sometimes two counties a year to host a remote session. I'd like to publicly give a shout out to all of our students because they did a tremendous job following the rules. It was really portrayed to us that we had to follow everything to a T because of the security and just the nature of it. And our students did great. The justices themselves publicly stated that they were so impressed with all the students from Defiance County, just their attentiveness, their full engagement. So, very proud of our students. A very big undertaking and a big, it was a big event for the county. I'd like to thank Defiance's administration specifically, Superintendent Bob Morton and High School Principal Jay Jurger. They spent a lot of time pulling this off, like weeks, probably a couple months, making everything happen. And they made sure that each of us principals in the county had exactly what we needed to get our students in and out in a timely fashion. So, very thankful to them. It was an exciting morning here in the high school today. Twenty-one juniors and seniors were tapped to become new members of the National Honor Society. This is a considerably large group this year, so we're proud of them all. These twenty-one students will be inducted into the chapter at the annual induction ceremony on November 5th at 6:00 PM. And that's open to the public. Fall sports are quickly coming to an end. Our varsity volleyball team will compete in sectionals this Thursday at Tenora. They play at 7:30. They take on Liberty Center there. And then our varsity cross-country teams have finished extremely well. They finished at the GMC meet this past Saturday. Both of them got second as a team. Congratulations to Maya Hagerty for making first team All-Conference Honors. Zefram Rittenhouse, Alex Franklin, and Casey Hedge made second team. And Braylon Adams, Jonah Laker, and Caleb Franklin earned honorable mention. And then both boys and girls will compete at the district competition this Saturday at 9:00 AM at Leaders Farms in Napoleon. Our varsity football team has their last home game this Friday against Edgerton, 7:00 PM. It's also senior night. And the traditional snake dance is back again this year. That takes place the night before the game Thursday, starts at 6:30 at the Field of Faith on the corner of Smith and Main. They'll make their way down to the community park, so if you're not in Tenora cheering on the girls, you can come participate in the festivities with the snake dance. Then next week, lots going on in the next, in the few weeks ahead here in the high school. Innovative interviews start next week. It's our first round, so if you remember how that goes, it's our financial management class. It's a semester class, so half the sophomores will participate in it in the fall and then half in the spring. So, they'll make their rounds to various business leaders and community members in the high school gym during their scheduled block and then their score on their interviewing abilities. Eight students then advance to the semifinals, which will be November 7th at PFW. They compete there to advance to the finals, which will be held in the spring at Defiance College. So, I'd like to wish all of our sophomores best of luck as they compete in that annual tradition. Next Thursday then, the following day, October 23rd, Defiance County Commissioners are coming to our school. They will be holding their weekly session here in the field house. This is their third year of doing so. It's a great opportunity for our students in senior government to see local government in action. So, all of our seniors will be attending that. We look forward to welcoming the Commissioners into our building once again. The high school and middle school then will be celebrating Red Ribbon Week, October 27th through the 31st. Theme dress-up days and student activities are planned by both Mrs. Chamberlain and Mrs. Wyman, our school counselors. So, we encourage all students to participate and join in the fun while demonstrating their commitment to be drug-free. Quarter one then is coming to an end next Friday. I encourage all of our students to finish strong. We are once again rewarding all of our high school students who are in honor roll with a treat each quarter. This first quarter, they will be invited to a morning donut party during first period on November 7th. And finally, then, we are going to be holding our Student of the Quarter Luncheon next Friday as well as we wrap up the quarter. Middle school and high school teachers are each able to select an outstanding student and invite them to a pizza luncheon. So, I would like to thank our sponsor for the first quarter, the Hicksville Eagles, for their generous donation for making this event happen for our students. That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right, we will be holding our district-wide parent-teacher conferences this week. Conferences take place on Wednesday from 3:15 to 6:15 and Thursday from 3:15 to 7:45. District-wide, we're looking forward to connecting with families to discuss, obviously, student progress and goals for the remainder of the year. So, that's this Wednesday and Thursday. Middle school-specific, we're really excited about our upcoming first-quarter incentives, rewards to celebrate students' hard work, positive behavior, and commitment to meeting grade-level expectations. So, we kind of split it up. Fifth and sixth grade is going to be on Friday, October 24th. Fifth-grade students are going to enjoy an afternoon of games where they actually bring in their favorite games from home. And that seems so simple, but those kiddos love doing that, bringing in their favorite games from home. And they just spend all afternoon playing games with each other and it's a really fun afternoon. And then our sixth graders that earn it will take part in a fun-filled candy casino event where they're going to play games to earn candy prizes. So, that's always a big hit each year. And then on Friday, October 31st, our seventh and eighth-grade students who have earned their incentive will travel to the skating station in Auburn, Indiana. I don't know if you guys have ever been there, I've heard it's pretty cool, for an afternoon of skating and games. Want to say a big thanks to Jim Schmidt for sponsoring the seventh and eighth-grade incentive this year. Also, on that Friday, October 31st, our sixth-grade students will be participating in this year's Wax Museum. We started that back up last year and it was, it was really, really cool. Each student has selected an influential person from history or today's world, researched and written a biography, created a timeline, designed costumes and displays, and then they memorize a short little speech and present it to anyone that would like to come. So, we can't wait to see their creativity and hard work on display. That'll be in the afternoon in the field house on October 31st. So, really excited for that. And then finally, our students are beginning in five through eight, the early qualifying rounds for this year's spelling bee. Crazy, that's already coming up. We will have our school spelling bee, grades five through eight, in November. And the champion will advance to the county and regional spelling bees. So, lots of good stuff going on in the middle school.
Thank you, Tony. Kirsten.
As Tony mentioned, our parent-teacher conferences are later this week. So, just a reminder that our elementary LMC is conducting their annual book fair. Students can purchase books throughout the school day, but parents can also visit the book fair during conferences. A huge thanks to Connie Klinker for her work behind the scenes as well as operating it this entire week. We do plan on honoring our veterans on Tuesday, November 11th with a special program and lunch. The doors will open at 9:30 with coffee available to our guests. The program begins at 9:55 with lunch to follow. This year's menu will include chili, a baked potato bar, celery and carrots, fruit medley, dessert, and a water. So, students are encouraged to invite a special guest and they can have lunch with their special guest and festivities will end at 11:15. So, to help us celebrate, please consider going to our Facebook page to register or call Pam up in Mr. Countryman's office by October 31st. We currently have forty-five veterans registered, so exciting to see that large number so far. Our title team just completed our beginning-of-the-year benchmarking just two weeks ago, and we're currently in the process of writing our reading improvement and monitoring plans for students that are identified as off-track. Excited to report that we have eighty-five percent of our first graders on track, seventy-seven percent of our second-grade students on track, and eighty-seven percent of our third-grade students on track. Obviously, kindergarten typically has the largest percentage of students off-track with only thirty-three percent on track right now, but that's why we do kindergarten. And then they get introduced to our great teachers here at Hicksville. So, also next week is our third-grade Fall Ohio State Test that will be taking place on Tuesday and Thursday. The most recent change by the state as of August, of this August, is that any student that is proficient in the fall will not have to take that test again in the spring. So, that is a huge, huge change. So, I know our title team has been working with our third-grade team very intentionally and deliberately, doing a lot of test prep and practices with our third-grade kiddos. So, we have already have some special things planned for those kiddos that I have to run by Mr. Countryman, for those that do pass in the fall, but I know that he'll support them. Also, Red Ribbon Week, as Erin said, is the last week of October. Mrs. Bragg, our elementary school counselor, has planned a lot of fun, memorable things during that week with one being a friendly kickball competition at the Hicksville ball fields, having community members come in and read to our students. And we are bringing back again the trick-or-treat with a variety of our community members inside the building. So, just a lot of fun things planned for that week.
Thank you very much. Eric?
I'm starting to sound like a broken record, but the building project is going very well. A few hiccups along the road, but that's to be expected. And there's a meeting this coming Thursday at 5:30.
Thank you. And Mr. Countryman?
Yep. I went to the NBHP Northern Buckethead Plan General Assembly Meeting where they established the health rates or the rate increase for insurance and happy to say that it was only 2.5% increase for medical, which is awesome. I can remember times when it was eight or even double digits, I believe, if I remember correctly, but not very often. So, they do a good job of maintaining that, keeping it pretty reasonable, so that's good. Then just the normal ESC superintendent meetings and the monthly county meetings with the superintendents. And I too would like to give a big shout out to Bob Morton and his high school principal as well. They did do a really good job of getting that really organized and keeping everybody fine-tuned on that process. So, it was a good thing for the kids, so yeah, thanks.
Okay, that's quick and easy. With that being said, we need to move on to minutes and financials, and I need two motions, please. Thank you, Galen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler.
The minutes from the regular board meeting on September 15th, 2025. The treasurer's consent agenda items as follows. Cash reconciliation as of September 30th, 2025. Financial statements for September 2025. The amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2026 as presented. A total general fund resources of $20,770,696.61 and total resources for all funds of $25,678,334.28. The fiscal year 2026 amended temporary appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $14,726,986.85 and total appropriations for all funds of $17,515,400, sorry, $515,415.47. To approve financial forecasts beginning with fiscal year 2026 as presented, a cash balances of June 30th, 2030 on line 7.020 is $5,259,444. To accept the following donations, $120 in an anonymous donation to the Science Club. Discussion.
Yes, I would like to just speak a little bit regarding the forecast. First thing, and this was spoken about, I think, last month, but the state has changed in the latest biannual budget. It's no longer the five-year forecast. It's a financial forecast that includes the current year and then the next three out. So, it's sort of more or less now a four-year forecast. However, I will continue to present five years with information, what will be submitted to ODU, Ohio Department of Education workforce, will be this year plus the next three. Not a lot of surprises, I guess I would say, in this forecast. What could be a surprise down the road will depend on what happens with all these bills that are out there regarding taxes. There's a whole slew of them. Some of them could be very detrimental. Right now, Hicksville, what is out there may be in better shape than other districts because we don't have emergency levies or continuing, or substitute levies. Those levies look like they will count against the 20 mil floor, which could be very detrimental to any school district that has those. Or if a district has inside millage that's been moved to their permanent improvement, which we have not. So, from that standpoint, hopefully we will weather the tax changes. But the fear is, who knows when a need is for a tax and if any new laws that come into effect, it could hurt the district negatively. But in this forecast, this line is basically set up that we'll see an increase based on 2026 calendar year updates. And then down the road, it'd be 2029 reappraisals, which happen every three years, nothing new there. But, so that's in there. Income tax, there's this, so far this year, we've received one payment. It's the largest payment of the four that we get throughout a year, and this one is up 5%. This 5% increase actually just puts us back about where we were two years ago after the first payment, because last year took a dip. But last year finished strong, so hopefully that will continue to go in that direction the rest of this year. The unrestricted state grants, this year, the Fair School Funding Plan, which is kind of being kicked out of the equation, but they still did, the state still allowed the phase-in portion of it to go from 67% last year to 83% this year, and from 83% in this fiscal year to 100% in the next fiscal year, fiscal year '27. Unfortunately, they did not allow the base cost increase to change, so we'll be dealing with numbers from base costs essentially a figure, determine how much it costs to educate in the state of Ohio, and then be adjusted for inflationary purposes, and they have not adjusted it. So, what you'll see is an increase this year, increase next year, and then you will see it starting to go backwards, actually starting to lose money in fiscal years '28, '29, and '30. So, unless there is some amendments or changes in the next biannual budget, our actual state funding appears as though it's going to go down. The restricted grants in the general fund, so that would be like the DPIA, gifted funding, curate funding, some items like that, wellness funding. Those amounts are going down as of this year and will continue to go down. Big reason why it's going down this year is because the way they're calculating DPIA, there's some percentage factors built into the formula that is lowering what districts are receiving. So, that was also part of House Bill 96, the biannual budget, that is negatively impacting this line item. State reimbursements or World Bank Homestead are pretty well, continue to go up slightly each year. And the next line item is all other revenue, mostly interest income, tuition fees are in there, Medicaid reimbursements in there. One of the, you'll see a big decrease from last year of over $775,654. A lot of what happened last year, we received about $100,000 in funding for technology upgrades. So, that came through the E-Rate Category II funding, and that is not anticipated, that is monies that come about every so often. Dollar amount can be flexible and how we can use it can be flexible too. So, that is why there was a decrease from last year to this year primarily in this line item. Operating transfers in, you see a little bit farther down, kind of on their own, those are the monies that we transfer from the general fund to the general fund bus fund so that hopefully we, in order to provide funding every two years to purchase a new bus. We get down to expenditures, personnel services, of course, this is payroll and the benefits associated to it are the largest expenditures of any school district. And you will see some increasing across there. This year, the increases have been mitigated a little bit because we've had four teachers this past year retire, another classified member's retired. We're down a couple of paraprofessionals, some aides, so that has helped. We also, though, on the flip side, added that third structured literacy teacher, so that's offset that decrease somewhat. And of course, the raises, the normal raises that come, this line item is moving up some, but not as much as in other years or potentially future years. As Mr. Countryman just stated, on retirement, insurance benefits, we are very fortunate this year that we're only seeing about a two-point, or seeing a 2.5% increase in medical insurance. No increase at all on dental vision or life, and there's really no change in the benefit plans of those either. So, our insurance consortium through NBHP has had a really strong couple of years, and that's allowing them to keep the increase moderated and hopefully that's a trend to continue. But as the number of years I've been as a school treasurer, that can change real fast. You can have a bad year before you know it. So, therefore, the four years extending now to the medical insurance has been projected to increase at 6%, which should be more in line with some of the increases historically, trying to make sure it can have hopefully the flexibility in the forecast if insurance does start to go up. And it will, it's just a matter of time and how much. Purchase services, staying pretty even. Purchase services playing, staying pretty even. Supplies and materials down a little bit this year, primarily, we had a lot of instructional purchases last year. And our capital outlay for this year is projected to be down considerably. Last year, we had two buses, we purchased a van, we upgraded the spirit shop, at which at some point in time, as it builds a revenue, cash balance in the spirit shop, we'll be starting to put some of that money back to the general fund to offset the original investment. The debt prints, a line four point oh five five is the fieldhouse and those classrooms that we added a few years ago. The last payment on this debt would be fiscal year two thousand thirty, which will be December first, two thousand twenty-nine. So it will be aligned there for principal, and the next line down is interest. And other objects would be stuff like auditor and treasure fees and assortment of other items. But go down, other operating transfers out. That is primarily, well, it's the money for the bus, transferring money into the general fund bus account, and also to reimburse the cafeteria on losses that are associated to the CEP program in which our students receive free meals. So as long as they are receiving the free meals, there will be a considerable amount going from the general fund back into the lunchroom. Now, as I mentioned early, DPIA is getting hit as the state changes the calculations. And last year, that really enabled us to use unrestricted general funds to go back into the lunchroom. I want to caution people that the CEP, those free lunches, may not last forever. So I hope people don't think that that's going to happen. The longer it goes that way, obviously, I think the better. But at some point in time, that may change depending on how funding comes in versus what we need to recover the lunchroom fund. So you get down to line seven point oh two is the cash balances through there. We are expecting to be, actually have more, a cash balance slightly higher than we did when we finished this past year. But the last two years of this forecast is predicted to be running in the negative. So one other thing I want to mention, you'll see in the far right column. Go down further, line eleven point oh two oh is school district income tax. So beginning in calendar year, our current point seven-five percent, five-year income tax currently will expire as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. We've renewed that before. Hopefully, that we'll be able to do that again. But the forecast, you cannot, up top, you cannot presume a levy being renewed. So up top, those revenues start to fall off, and they're added to the line eleven point oh one oh. So I think, you know, the future, how this plans out, a lot will do with what legislation does to school districts, what the effect of that is. Unfortunately, what we're seeing is the state of Ohio continually puts more pressure on the local taxpayers that pay for school. Originally, it was set up that local taxes would be fifty percent, state taxes or state funding would be fifty percent. That number right now in a state of Ohio, the state is putting in about thirty-three percent. Obviously, nowhere near the fifty percent. We're about eleven points, eleven percent lower than the national average. The state funding now in a state of Ohio, we're about forty-fifth out of the, in the United States. So I think we all should be aware that there is forces against public schools, against public school funding, and to talk to our legislators and let them know the importance of what we do. And get them to start working to correct our situation. And the more that they push off onto the local, the more pressure is put on our people in the community to come up to be able to afford and be able to have great school systems.
Any questions?
Comments?
Thanks for all the detail, well explained, to make it easy to understand.
And so, yeah, and then there's, in the packet that you have, there's twenty-five total pages or something. Got a lot of detail in there about each one of these sections. Some of the information, there's a lot of charts, pie charts, graphs, bar charts, all that. And then there's system-generated explanation of what's happening. And then below that, typically, I've added some further detail that's very pertinent to our district itself.
I find that the colors help me stay.
You know what, Tyler, I'm the same way. I, yeah, I like the color.
Draw me in.
Yeah.
And again, Mike, we do appreciate you being so, paying such close attention to detail and helping us through this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, so, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Moving on to the employment of certified staff, a motion, please.
I'll move.
Jen, thank you. Jen first, Eric second. Emma Payne as a certified substitute for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And Krisha Binder as a certified substitute for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Discussion?
It is Binder.
Binder, thank you. All right. No discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to the employment of classified staff, a motion, please.
I'll move, I'll second.
Okay, Tyler and Galen, thank you.
Emma Payne as classified substitute for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Krisha Binder as a classified substitute for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Increase Courtney Rittenhouse elementary aide to thirty hours per week. And accept the resignation from Addie Saylor as the assistant to the treasurer effective December fifth, twenty twenty-five. Discussion?
Just a brief comment. I've enjoyed Addie Saylor being here. She's very bright, she's offered a lot of new ideas to the district. But she has said that she has to resign for personal, family reasons, so I cannot argue that.
So thanks to Addie for the time that she did spend with us and is continuing through December fifth, which is nice. Roll call?
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Moving on to services and agreements, motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Galen, thank you. He was louder.
That's fine.
Yeah. Memorandum of understanding between the Hicksville Board of Education and the Hicksville Education Association to amend the July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight collective bargaining agreement supplemental salary schedule, increasing the middle school yearbook advisor index from point zero three to point zero five. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. And other business, motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler.
Resolution number twenty twenty-six hyphen oh one, resolution to adopt special education model policies and procedures. And approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Ford Super Duty F-250, four-wheel drive, at a cost of forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Discussion?
Does that Ford come with a tow strap? It's not a loaded question, it's pretty.
Well, I think we need.
Is it replacing something?
So what's it?
It's, the current one we have, the truck that we use mostly, our lot, use it for snow removal. It's rusting really bad, and there's some ignition issues, I guess. So Mr. Basset thought it would be a good time to update that so that we have some reliability when it comes time to remove snow. This would have, the timing of this is a bit after the fact. The reason why that happened is our last board meeting was like the thirteenth or fifteenth or something, a day or two later. The quote came in, and the quote was, had a twenty-five hundred dollar cash rebate back, but that expired, would have expired September thirtieth. We did not want to lose out and wait this month for approval and miss out on the twenty-five hundred dollars. Eric has also been out getting quotes to add salt spreader, plow, and those type of items to this. So right now, it looks like it's in the twelve to thirteen thousand dollar additional range. So we have, though, we will be getting a Bureau of Work compensation grant that will cover seventy-five percent of that. So that will definitely help to reduce that cost. And he will be putting the current Ford truck on gov.deals and see, we've had pretty good luck with getting some good return on that. So hopefully, we get something out of there to help offset the cost of this new purchase.
So the PWC is that seventy-five percent of the salt?
Yes, not the truck itself. It's, yeah, it's limited to stuff that has more to do with
All the gadgets you can put on.
The attachments.
Safety and things like that.
Come from like Schmitz, or where do we buy a vehicle like that from?
That one did.
Yeah, this one came from Schmitz. We looked at several different options through co-op purchasing. And one co-op that we went through, they had one actually would have been coming out of Mexico. That was the same, same truck, and it also was like four hundred dollars more. So that was nice to, I mean, nice from the standpoint that we were able to stay in town and patronize our local dealer and still get the best deal.
Well, they obviously support the school, so I want to.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And we're always allowed to go with the best, the lowest and best bid, so we know what we're getting through our local dealership, and we have always got great service.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Any old business that you would like to discuss?
Are we going to talk about the building project, Mr. Farrell's classroom?
I would think that would be the place to do that, yes, yeah, old business, so. I know he has that grant that you guys all know about that, I believe it's two hundred and fifty thousand. And with the, with what he has been looking at, that's probably going to be valued more at about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand because of the prices he was able to get. But he's going to have to send that back if we don't order the stuff. And if we don't, you know, he's already.
There's no point in buying expensive stuff if we can't house it in the appropriate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I think with as many students as we have going through that program on a daily basis, we need to do something better than what we're currently doing.
We absolutely have to, and not even just because of the number of students, but for the safety of the students. I would say that that's probably even more important than.
Well, I guess my thought was, it's not like we're focusing on twenty students and we're spending a bunch of money for a class for twenty students. That's not what we're doing. I mean, it's a large program.
I'm glad you said that on the numbers, Jen, because it actually started out, Erin, with like twenty. And we're at like running a hundred and twenty through there every day now.
And that'll only go up, too. I can't imagine it not.
And, I mean, and I think it's the variety of students that we have going through there. We have students that are interested, of course, in, you know, blue-colored jobs. We also have students that are interested in, yes, in being engineers and nurses and, you know, even teachers that are taking those classes, and that just helps make them a more well-rounded, well, make them all more well-rounded students.
It without doubt affects the trajectory of these kids.
Without a doubt, and I think, I was talking with a sophomore parent, and their child didn't really like, they looked at Ford County, but there wasn't a program there that really fit them and what they wanted, which Ford County is amazing, and if you know what you're want to do and you can go that route, it's great. But at the age of these kids are, to expect them to know what they want to do for the rest of their life. You know, there's a lot of kids who don't know what they do, but they know they don't want to go to college or don't think they want to go to college. You know, I think this fills the gap that, that those in-between students, where they get exposure to so many different things with Mr. Farrell, and they can explore a lot of different things out there and find something that works for them.
It allows them to make better choices?
Yeah, and the vocational side of the house, I think, allows them to, they're set up to be more of an entrepreneur, I think. Than they would be otherwise, so it's invaluable.
I also think, too, we have to, we need to move forward with doing something, or we need to stop doing the program because there's not enough room. There's not, we're doing a disservice to the kids who stay here expecting to do that program. And if we can't fulfill that.
I don't think it's a wise choice to discontinue the program.
Don't either.
The program, so.
I do think you're right, there's a pretty cut line, it's either do it or don't do it.
Yeah.
I didn't think of it that way.
And in all honesty, I mean, if we look at a financial situation, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were talking about, well, basically consolidating is the way I think of it. The loan that we have currently on the fieldhouse and then adding to it another loan for that newer building.
Well, that would be an option. Whether it's the best option or not, I don't know. The current loan we have, we got it with really, really favorable interest rates. So we want to be careful not to upset the apple cart there. But that's one way that can be done, is I think to basically wrap the the current lease purchase agreement for the fieldhouse out there. If we go ahead with this project, we'll need to have another lease purchase agreement. Whether you wrap the two or have them completely separate, or there's a COPs program out there, that's something we may be able to do with that, too, as far as of getting money and paying it back. The, and then there's, you know, we can do five years, which five years would probably be too much of a bite to take off as far as the amount of, you know, what that debt would be. But there's ten-year options, it could be fifteen-year options even farther. I don't know if we want to go farther than that, but we can obviously look at five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year different options, whether we wrap them, whether it's ground lease, whether it's COPs. Those are all different items that are available as far as tools available for financing, so.
Is that something you could prepare options for us to look at?
Yes.
Again?
Yes, can either do that, I can have our representative come in to speak to, speak to you guys.
So what kind of timeframe is Nathan up against about this grant?
I think if we get to go ahead on the contract with the architect, is where you got to start first. So that you'll know how much money you're looking at then, in order for Mike to meet with those people to determine five, ten, or fifteen-year loan, so.
Well, Mike needs that to do his projections, right?
This would.
Yeah, the architect then would do his thing and then be able to come up with cost estimates and give us a much more firmer idea what the project would cost. And of course, then we could have flexibility deciding, okay, is there anything we want to amend or adjust to what he comes up with? So.
So what I'm hearing from my fellow board members is we would like to go ahead with at least looking at the numbers for this project.
I have one question for Mike with the five-year forecast fresh in everybody's mind. We're looking at, give or take, five million dollars for a project. How do you feel, you feel comfortable enough to pursue it at five million dollars? I mean, is that a? I mean, is that a huge red flag, is there, what's your gut feel?
Well, yeah, right now, we're in a, um, these next three years especially, operating in a pretty good, um, positive in the black, especially this coming year as we look right now. Um, then we, as far as financing going out, the last year on the current one is twenty-nine, so that would free up that as far as those expenditures going to the fieldhouse, um, availability. So, these first next several years, we've got, we'll have good operating in the black, um, to help, to help with that. Then it'd be a little possibly leaner, um, but then we drop off the debt that we have and therefore would also put us in a better situation.
Another way to frame Eric's question is, can we afford the payment overlap?
I, I think we'd be able to.
I think that's what he was saying.
Okay.
That's what I got from what you were saying.
We still have money sitting in, in all of our investments that we haven't paid off loans because we're making more money in interest and we're gaining more money in interest than we're paying interest on the loan. So, I mean, we still have that there too.
And yeah, as far as the, I gave you those numbers over the weekend, about five million dollars in PI, um, and those other funds that we've set up for, um, the local initiatives, the stuff associated with building this building itself, three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars in one fund, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand in another, um, seventy-nine thousand in another, all had to do with monies that have either were left over from this building project and have accumulated interest earned on those. The athletic fieldhouse project, uh, we actually came in under budget. We've got fifty-five thousand, six fifty-three, that was, um, remaining from that. Thank goodness we didn't have to do anything for water over on the road, but there's a little bit there. So, I guess, my presumption is, is we want to keep that money away from anything else 'cause it's been the intention all along to make sure that we can do things for this building we have right here. I mean, theoretically, we may be able to move some of that over towards this project, but with the general fund looking really strong this year and next year, we could use possibly some of that money to bring down the, the cost of what would be the debt on any future construction. Or use it to move forward to help with possible couple of lean years when we're, we'd still have both of those debt projects going on for those, that small period of time.
I don't want to make this assumption, but I thought, um, we should address the bus barn issue. I'm assuming the bus barn is going to be a part, part of that construction, correct? Under that five-million-dollar goal.
Right.
Okay, all right. And then, my two educators who are mostly impacted by that, um, Tony and Erin, your thoughts on this, honestly?
I mean, it obviously opens up more educational opportunities for our kids. One thing that always comes to mind when I think about it, like you said, can and should it even exist without the proper space? Right now, Nathan teaches welding, and I put that quotes because there's one welder, there's one welder out there. It's very hard to do with a class of twenty kids with one welder. You really need a whole station of five or six where you instruct a little and then you turn them loose in pairs in, in a booth and they're able to go weld it. So everything is done at a much smaller scale and he's making do and the kids love it, but it's not where it should be. The same with the woodworking tools, things have to get shuffled around just to make room. Everything is so intentional and, yeah, we'll do a little bit here, okay, then I'll have the classes to stand and wait while you four are over here. So, um, yeah, it's not done to the full capacity right now. So the opportunities really do open up for kids. Um, eventually this, I don't think it's too premature to say, but, um, if it continues to grow, you know, with that comes more funding, more kids involved in it. Um, I will say the goal is that potentially you could add another, another staff member out there, another teacher. Um, and then that opens up more opportunities for middle school electives, um, extending it to seventh grade instead of just eighth grade, uh, more specialized courses. And again, the goal would be that that doesn't really add much to general fund expenditures. If you're able to bring in more funding, help cover the cost of that. So, I don't want to say opportunities are endless, but kind of when you think about what we have now, lots of different things could be done that are possible in that building.
And I would just add to it, and Erin kind of hit on this, but any great program starts from the ground up, right? I mean, you, you talk about youth injecting energy into your program. Right now, we're kind of capped with doing that 'cause scheduling's just so hard with what we have out there. So, you know, if we can open that up and we can look at more opportunities for the youth, I think that's only gonna help build more numbers by getting them excited and getting them out into that building. So, that's what I see most from the middle school standpoint is, we're just so strapped with our scheduling right now that we want to give these kids opportunities to get out there, but sometimes we just simply can't. And this will allow us to be able to do that.
One of the reasons I like this particularly for that middle school band, the upper middle school band, is because it gives them a chance to move and to work with their hands and to get up out of a seat. Because, don't take any offense at this, but middle schoolers are squirrely. And the more time that they have, I bet you do, um, and the more time that they have to be physically active is, is better for them.
And it's only gonna help in the core areas.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you talk about behaviors, you talk about all that. We look for opportunities to get them up and moving and learning and doing all that stuff, but again, we're so strapped in so many areas. And our teachers do a great job with what we have, but giving more opportunities like this, like you're saying, that's only gonna help. Absolutely.
And I also throw out there to ask about like the educational programming, what we'll be able to offer with that equipment that Nathan secured the grant for, essentially three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment that we won't have to pay for, is truly gonna be cutting-edge stuff that other districts don't have. I mean, our kids will have a branded robot to learn how to use that. Um, I know Stryker has one, but that's the only school that I know of in the area. Some of like the largest 3D printer I've ever seen, but, you know, he pointed out some of those things, uh, things that kids will go into industry and they'll have the upper hand, um, ready to jump right into a job or a career, um, we'll have learned it here. So, lots of good opportunities will come, um, and it will help us to equip that space quite nicely.
I love the fact that we can look at our local industry and that we can reach out to them and be like, okay, what, what can we bring into our classroom that we can teach these kids to get them interested in going out and doing those things? And that's how, at a local level, we can really affect kids and our community around us.
A group of Bryan educators were just at APT today and they came back and they were talking to me about it. And I'm like, it's just something that Hicksville does, we send kids, and Fairview, we send kids there. It's, it helps to send them out. Eric and Galen, since you are more industrial people, do you have any extra thoughts on the, well, the equipment that we're gonna be able to get? Plus, additionally, I know Eric, because you went to Ford County, um, some thoughts on how we're doing it at home versus sending kids out to Ford County?
Um, I mean, I think, in my opinion, if somebody wants to go to be, learn to be an electrician, then yeah, Ford County is a good fit for that. You're gonna go be an electrician. But if somebody says, I'm kind of interested in electricity, but I also like woodworking, then staying here at your homeschool is a better option where you get to dabble in both and decide what you really do like in life. Um, a little bit of a jack of all trades. Um, the two biggest issues I see in the future if we do do the expansion is, one, no matter how big it is, it's not gonna be big enough. And two is staffing it properly. So I think those are some headaches that we need to, or hurdles that we need to work through. Um, but there is all kinds of fantastic equipment out there that the kids can get their hands on and learn. And there's a lot of other high schools who have proven out they can do this and be successful at it, so. And Nathan's proven out that it's been successful here, so I'm on board.
Thank you.
Well, there's so much more now, today, than just like woodworking, auto body and welding and electrician. I mean, you know, you've got like the, the whole drone component, you've got the robot, the robotic component of it. So, all of that taken as a whole, I think, gives these kids a big advantage in being able to see a lot of different things. And, I mean, I'm kind of biased, but I mean, look at, look at what Ava did. You know, I mean, that's, there's proof. I think that, that case study pr- proves it.
Proof's in the pudding.
Yeah, so.
Something, go ahead. Something you had mentioned at our last meeting was more of an industrial, you know, we could save money industrially. You know, I would, I would vote more for square foot than I would, like-
Matching.
Artistic.
Yeah.
You know, interior.
As much as we want, we, and we appreciate the aesthetics of the buildings that we have. This, I really do, it's gonna be an industrial building. It should be because this is, this, this is all about industrial work for the most part. And it is also more bang for our buck in all honesty, I personally think.
And long-term, not only does it, I, I think it also benefits the community as a whole, benefits businesses and the community.
Yeah, in the long run, absolutely.
Like, case in point, you know, you're gonna be able to snatch up some, some talent.
And for the parents in this community, it must be nice being able to keep your kids in the community 'cause my children are probably not gonna come back here in what they're doing, but.
So you had mentioned previously in an email maybe the air conditioning unit, did, was that a go-ahead already, do we need to?
We did not do that.
Okay.
Uh, we did not do that. Obviously, we're not gonna need it now, but I think that might have an impact. I mean, well, maybe we wouldn't even need to do it, maybe we can sneak through, you know what I'm saying? Because I think the next step is to, for you guys to approve the architect piece. And then, I don't know, and I'm thinking it's gonna take a month or two for them to get that information and then we'll bring that back to you guys, uh, with budget amounts.
Should we approve that in today's meeting? The architect piece at least, yes?
Yes, that, because it's more than-
Mike, can you add that to the agenda and vote on that?
Um, if you want some numbers, I can give them to you.
I would like to hear the numbers.
Yeah, the total cost for the architect would be a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, Eric. With a hundred-and-thirteen thousand of it being now to start it. That hundred-and-thirteen would, obviously, it goes towards the hundred-and-eighty-nine. So the others would be, uh, you know, pre-construction, construction and closeout and best value selection is the other amounts that make it up to the hundred-and-eighty-nine that are part of there.
And this is, is this for a full floor plan layout or this is just, I guess, what, what's all entailed in that hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand?
Well, this would be the actual drawings and other buildings.
Actual drawings, that'd be this back. Assuming that we don't want anything changed, we can hand that off and have them go build that exact building.
Right.
Okay.
So what kind of information do we need to provide to them as far as footprint, forest base and lab area and all that?
That, uh, all that stuff. Uh, yeah, and, you know, we've given them some preliminary information, but we would, you know, now that, if you approve this, then we're gonna, you know, we'd put together a group, not just us, but a group that would, can have some input and say on it and, uh, you know, then, you know, 'cause other people are gonna see things that we don't. So, yeah, and they'll start on that right away. So it's gonna take a couple of months to put all that together and we have general ideas, but we didn't fine-tune anything because we weren't to this point, so.
I wanted to clarify, the hundred-and-thirteen thousand is, it sounded to me like, like an up, it's not an upfront payment. It's the first part of the project, the concept and design criteria. So as the architect goes through that, they'll be billing us through phases and stages instead of a hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars upfront. I don't know, I mean, that's just kind of what it sounds like.
That's a good distinction, so thank you for clarifying.
It's a lot less gasp-worthy when we think about it that way. Okay. So, um, so we would like to, um, have a motion to get the architect involved in this, um, Ag project.
I'll move.
Ag building project, Jen is the first.
I'll second.
Galen, second. And it will, oops, I'm sorry, Mike.
Well, let's get some, get the language exact here.
Okay.
Motion by Jen Carrier, second. By Mr. Methman. To approve Bauhars, let's see. Architects Inc. For, for professional services agreement.
While he's typing that up, when we're imagining this, are we talking about coming out?
You want to just put that there?
To the right, like extending the hallway of, or the current-
Entrance would be like K-12 school project.
So the fieldhouse, and then there's several, okay, so it's continuing past the classrooms of the fieldhouse.
Maybe that's what they were thinking.
Okay.
Okay. This is how I have it typed up, let me know if we need to make changes to it, um, as- Mrs. Carrier made a motion, seconded by Mr. Methman, to approve Bauhars, Bauhars Architects, Inc. For professional services agreement for public facility construction of a STEM addition and bus garage in an amount of a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars.
So, um, we're STEM, okay.
Well, the contract says STEM, so, well, of a STEM.
I guess we can, a little word choice.
Vocational, say that again, vocational agriculture?
I've been asked today, I said, what are we calling this? Because I keep thinking STEM too, so.
Ag, Ag program paging, first order.
It's kind of a combination really, Erin.
It, it is, but I think because of the way we're getting the funding, that it really needs to be Ag.
It's an approved ET, ET program to the state.
It's all about verbiage.
Okay, so change to motion by Mrs. Carrier, seconded by Mr. Methman, to approve Bauhars Architects, Inc. for professional services agreement for public facility construction of a vocational agricultural program addition and bus garage in an amount of a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Yes, sounds good. Yep, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Okay, a roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, any other discussion for the board?
I have one more. So Erin, somebody had brought up to me, a parent, um, and asked about, um, exams, which we no longer do, you know, semester-end exams, which I'm sure makes lots of people happy. And I'm not suggesting, I'm not questioning why we do that, but why for students going on to college? Like, are we doing them a disservice by not having exams on some of the college classes? So that we were preparing them for college?
Yeah, so this, um, I wrote some notes since you gave me heads up on it, I appreciate that. Um, you know, I could speak on it really anytime. I had the same conversation with my previous district and then when I came here, Mr. Slattery was kind of just solidifying what the, what the plan was here. I believe it started during COVID and then the teachers, there was discussion amongst our high school staff, we'd want to keep that. We've not, sort of not doing exams. And the majority were in favor of not doing exams. And majority were in favor of not doing exams. There's definitely arguments on both sides, but the short answer is no, I don't think, we are not doing our kids a disservice. I really stand by that. One, our kids are very heavily tested across the board. And two, in terms of our performance as a high school, I think we prove that every year that we continually outperform just about every neighboring district. And I will say that we are in the minority where we're not doing exams. Most schools still do them. It's been brought up at my GMC principal meeting several times, and every time I have to remind them, we don't do them at Hicksville. And they're kind of dumbfounded, but I do feel like we kind of proved that you don't have to do exams to, to show success. Now, I do understand the argument of, are they going to be ready for college at some of those college classes? A few things I want to say on that. One, no longer is the majority of our students going on to college. So last year was forty-three percent of our graduating class went to college. Now, yes, I still stand by what we want to do as right for all kids, you know, and the college path, that remains strong, the career type path, that remains strong. But no longer are the majority of the graduating out here going to college. With that, I would say even college programming has changed from what it used to be. You know, like I, I look at my, the program that I went to, a socialized teacher, less than ten exams total was what I took. Mostly were papers, paper kind of as an exam. So I think that number, that forty-three percent, if we can be relevant to all of them, it depends on what program you go to. But my biggest thing that I want to point out is when I see evidence of what our teachers are doing in the classroom in terms of teaching, studying skills, assessing thoroughly throughout the year, I'm comfortable in not getting a final, you know, exam. As a principal, I want to be confident in that grade all year long versus waiting until the last day of the semester and then one test that takes the kids forty-five minutes counts for twenty percent of the overall grade. I don't think that's an accurate reflection of what they've done all semester long. So if it were just that and then I didn't have it paired with, I see the great things that are going on in those college prep courses, like our chem classes, our advanced English, our AP class, things like that. Maybe I won't be as confident, but I, it really makes me confident seeing what's going on. And then also, we touch base with our, our recent grads. And more often than not, I hear that this class is so easy because of what I have at Hicksville. It's so easy to write a paper because Mr. Hagan was pushing that like crazy. My math is so easy because what I did in Mrs. License class or with Mr. Schaper in colleges. So I think our kids are pretty well-prepared.
First tangents of that, by the way. I just had that conversation about a week ago.
Not every school could say that, and I truly mean that, because I've seen other, looks like other schools. So we're pretty fortunate there. So I would have a hard time looking at the alternative, which would mean going back to exams, because I just see, I feel like the benefits of not having them outweighed. And kids dread them. I mean, they, you cram for it, and I get it, yeah, you might do that in college with certain degree programs, but I just don't see true relevance anymore in the high school sector.
Okay.
Well, I think you guys do a great job of putting tools in their toolbox to think critically, to apply logic, to, to manage their time. And with those three things in their toolbox, then they can go forth and get hit with an exam. They're not, eh, deal, I know what I'm doing, you know? So I think that, that's a big piece of the, the secret sauce that you guys have.
I would agree. And so the only thing that maybe they don't have, you know, the true experience with is just cramming for that one test at the end of the semester. But, you know, our assessments are, are solid in our courses across the building. So, you know, they know how to approach an assessment, a high stakes test, they don't have to do it very well. And combined with everything that Galen just said, I don't have any worries that they're not going to be able to do a hundred question multiple choice tests in college.
And if I may, just interject briefly and take off my board president cap and put on my teacher cap. I am an adjunct professor and I, the way that colleges more and more are going, project based, you can call it exam, but they're, they're cooperative. They, they put a group of students together and say, this is what I want you to do, you're going to make a presentation, you're going to, this is going to be your exam. So more and more, like Erin was saying, moving away in the college world from pen and paper answer, one through one hundred, bubble in, and more, again, it's a paper or it's a project based presentation at the end. Emily, would you agree with what you've seen so far in school?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I back that up a hundred percent. I think we're kind of moving away from that older kind of pedagogy, even in the colleges.
We still have several teachers that will find some way to, some kind of cumulative assessment, whether it be a project or, or maybe even a large test at the end of the year. They're still free to do that. We're just not setting out the, this is exam day and twenty percent of the final grade is off of this test grade. But there are still.
And even at the school where I teach, the teachers are given pretty broad leeway to say, okay, I'm going to have my students do a project based exam, I'm going to have them do a paper, I'm going to have them do a group presentation. And I think a lot of schools are moving, I don't know what your principals are saying, but I know what we do in our school at Bryan is like that.
I feel like it's just kind of like taboo to talk about. And it, I mean, a lot of work went into it before I got here, surveying the teachers and waiting to pros and cons meetings and what, what should we do? And then kind of jumped in it and we're in it. I can say a lot of our tools want to do what we're doing. Again, when you look at it from our side, it's like you want to rest assured that that grade is all year long and that twenty percent isn't coming for a long test.
Be tested on that day.
Yeah, and those kids that aren't good test takers, lots of people have lots of voices and concerns when it comes time to exams, you know, like, that's not fair. And then, and then it really is, we got to make sure that it's a fair and accurate assessment. So again, just being able to have the focus being all year, I, I just, I stand by it. And a lot of, there are a lot of people that would love to go this route, but it is a difficult conversation.
I think you've done a great job of explaining it.
You probably got more detail than what you wanted.
No, I, I, like, I prepped him. I said, hey, I'm going to ask you this, you know? It was brought to me and I'm like, you know, good question. I don't, you know, when I can't answer it, you know?
We also have one more item under discussion, Fort County Career Center, Hicksville School Board Representative.
I'll continue to do it once somebody else speaks up and they want a shot at it.
You ever get tired of doing it?
Okay.
Pass it on.
I'll let you do it as long as you want.
You're good to it, Erin, so thank you for doing that for us.
Okay. Any other discussion, old business? Emily, did you have anything to share with us or you?
Um, I guess, I haven't really done like any exams yet, but what I've seen, I think that Hicksville does prepare us really well because in one of my college career readiness things, we have, we just learned how to do semesters. And I had been doing those since elementary school. And it just showed me like how well I was prepared to actually go into college, because I've been doing college for like leveled stuff since I was probably in like middle school.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. I do want to say that it has been requested that we go into executive session for item one to, to consider the employment of a public employee or official. There will be no action taken during this meeting or after this meeting, I should say. Our next meeting will be, is supposed to be Monday, November seventeenth. Do we have any discussion on that or are we good to go?
That's when we're gone at Capitol Conference, Jen and I, so we would both not be here.
I would not be here, I'll be at Capitol as well.
He's going through.
Oh, okay.
Awesome. Well, then my suggestion would be, if everybody's okay with it, to do it the following Monday.
So the twenty-fourth?
Mm-hmm. And I don't know, we can talk about it then on the twenty-fourth, but Mike and I were kind of talking today a little bit about that too, because I won't be able to be at the December meeting. And we were talking with December being one of those short months anyhow, maybe with the November meeting being late and the January one we have to do early because of the organizational meeting, we could decide.
So I'll be done in November?
Yeah.
Well, no, technically, if anything comes up.
We wouldn't have.
Yours still, you know.
You don't want to let you off that early.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, there's no meeting in December.
I mean, we wouldn't, we don't have to make the December decision now. We can't, actually.
Well, here's the thing, though, I already have plans for November twenty-fourth.
Oh, no.
So I don't know if we could squeeze it into that first week of December or, because we have that full week off and we've already, I've already made plans to, to be off that week.
You mean, push, push the November one back?
Yeah, like combine November and December, just into December, like that first week of December, since you, would that be more? I mean, for me, that's better because I will not be here on the twenty-fourth. And Mike, if you don't have like financial stuff, I know that's.
Well, the first or the eighth?
So December first or eighth, will that work for?
Well, December first, I would not have financial information, but I should have it by the eighth.
Okay. So we'll combine the two months together and have December eighth as our meeting at five thirty here, as our next board meeting?
Should that kind of work for you? That'll be okay for you?
Otherwise, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Erin.
No, we're good, never mind. I changed my mind.
Okay. So we're looking at our next meeting being Monday, December eighth at five thirty in this room. I do need a motion to go into executive session, say about six fifty-five. So we have a first from Jen and a second from Galen and a roll call, please, Mike.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methen?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Take a brief break, be back in five minutes. Thank you.